Let's go ahead and get started. Can we have the roll call? Yeah.
Present? Present? Here.
Here. Thank you. We had a closed session. Is there any report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council was in closed session on a public employee evaluation as shown on the agenda. Council conferred and conducted the review. There's no action to report at this time.
Thank you. And now that we have a favorable ruling from the Supreme Court, Councilman Leonard will lead us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. Father in heaven, thank you for your love for us and your continued watch over us and pray we'll be here in this meeting as we discuss issues relative to the city and if we will come to the right decisions for the best and benefit of our lives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be deleted or added?
No, sir.
Okay. This is the public's chance. Oral reports, public participation. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any items not agendized? I have no request slips and no other takers. So we'll go to item number one, public hearing. I understand there's an update on this item?
This is public hearing for a appeal of a nuisance finding from the planning commission for the properties located at 24800 Redlands Boulevard, 24816 Redlands Boulevard, and 24818 Redlands Boulevard. Before we begin, the property owner's representative asked to make a statement.
This parent of mine is intended to evoke fear that this could be a protracted session.
I see you've brought your poorly-named briefs.
No, those are -- they're actually more for show, and here's why. I'm going to need to make a request of this council, but for so long, this whole issue has been an issue about perceptions, perceptions on both sides, perceptions by my client about the city and perceptions about the city of my client's intentions and the conditions of his property. But for relevance, I've got to confine it to really specific points only that remain, and those were the points that came before the fire hearing board that was conducted -- oh, the exact date escapes me, but about a month ago. And my intention is to make it absolutely clear that despite a long and sometimes acrimonious and expensive and emotional history of this issue, it really telegraphs down to some things that are very small, are very pedestrian, and according to the fire hearing board, almost completely resolved. So I have a keen interest that even if ultimately my client is completely successful on all of those issues, I don't think that's exactly the point. This is not about winning and losing, and I'm also very aware of the vast power that the city has. So in any situation, you don't want what is perceived to be an adversary, and you're not an adversary, going away mad at the end of a negotiation. I really would like everybody to feel good because what I'm seeking is a just and lasting peace and workable relationship between my client and the city, and I think that's achievable at this point. We're very close to it. Now with that somewhat extensive preamble, here's why. What I'm going to recommend tonight is one more continuance. My client is not in town. He will be back on the 18th. I see that Councilman Daley is not here, and I can't imagine he would not like the opportunity to weigh in on whatever decisions are made here tonight. So with that said, I'd just like to restate that the issues that remain, despite starting out vast, are now so small, we're really talking about perhaps one small pile of twigs and wood in a corner of a two-and-a-half acre property and one downed tree that is serving as support for some leafy vines. That's really what we're talking about now, and I believe and I hope that your staff member Conrad Boloich will back me up about our current status. I'd like to reserve the right to return to the podium after hearing Conrad's summation of where we stand. Let me just add one final little thing. Should we -- and this isn't by means of a threat, it's something I'm constrained to do. If we do want to reach some ultimate conclusions about the rather extensive lists of fines and violations that my client faces tonight, then I must assure that read into the administrative record is every challenge, every flaw, every issue going back for a long time, and that just serves no purpose because by next month, after we've had a chance, well, Conrad will say, inspect the few remaining issues, all that will be superfluous. So that's my immediate request and to be continued if I need to come back and explicate further why and what the only four issues are, which has actually reduced down to two at this point. Thank you.
Staff's okay with that. We understand that his client's out of town. We haven't had a chance to get onto the property to verify that any of the remaining issues have been resolved, so we're under the assumption that once his client returns, we'll have access to the property to complete the inspection, and then in good faith, it will have resolved all the outstanding issues.
Based on your last inspection, were there still a number of items that needed to be fixed?
Our last inspection was, I don't want to misspeak, five or six months ago. Now, Mr. Lubinski has indicated that a great deal of those issues have been resolved from the street. They look like they have. We're, you know, at no point has he been dishonest or not truthful with what he said is there, so we are taking it at his word on that. So once we have the inspection, I think we'll be able to close down these issues.
So if we continue, we continue until when?
June 10.
June 10.
Would that work for you?
June 10.
Yeah. I move that we continue this item until June 10. I'll just make a statement that if there's any other outstanding issues, hopefully he has more time to fix whatever's left to be fixed between now and then.
We need to have a public hearing.
Public hearing, okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll open the public hearing. For those in attendance who cannot come back to the time of the date certain continuance, public hearings open. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Seeing and hearing no commotion this direction, I will close the public hearing. And now you may make your motion.
And move, we move item number one through to the June 10 meeting.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about it? Those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It is unanimous. We will move that to June 10. Next is the consent calendar, which is the bulk of our agenda.
Yes, I would like to pull number seven and see attorney can give you an update on that.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody wants to pull?
I'd like to pull number six.
Okay, let's talk about those now. Let's do six.
I'd just like a report from either city manager or assistant manager about number six and...
Number six is an agreement for the city of Loma Linda to provide IT services to the city of Grand Terrace. Grand Terrace has had some challenges in the last year or so, has cut their staff fairly significantly, and as part of that, they're having a problem managing their IT services. On the other side, their infrastructure is even more outdated and antiquated than ours. So as part of this, they will be refreshing their voicemail desktops, phone system servers, essentially their city hall infrastructure. Most of their platforms are the same as ours, their finance, their building permits, code enforcement platforms are all the same as ours. So what we're looking at is essentially a halftime position to assist Grand Terrace with their IT work. It may be here on site with us, it may be there, and then their payment would offset that halftime cost plus overhead to manage that. So as a revenue stream, it's not a moneymaker, it's us helping out our neighbor without hurting ourselves in the process.
You say you're hiring another one, another halftime, or you're dedicating somebody existing for halftime?
It would require us hiring a halftime employee.
We would hire them?
That's correct. We would hire them. For them to manage with a halftime person, you know, to do break-fix and implementation, you really can't get the level of quality and skill that it takes to manage a citywide IT operation on a halftime person and have that person around. What we would look is using, for the higher end, using our existing staff and then supplementing break-fix and support here at city hall with the new halftime person.
Then would they be giving us enough to offset all the costs on that?
Correct. They would be offsetting the halftime cost plus 15% for management and overhead.
And future costs like pensions and things like that, or maybe that doesn't apply for half-time?
Halftime is, part-time are not eligible for pension or benefits.
Okay.
But these costs could increase. Is this negotiable or is this hard?
This is, this will be for this year, and then we'll look at it again at the end of the year to see what we've really done. We've spent, we've actually put about 68 man-hours into assessing Grand Terrace's infrastructure, had our guys over there look at the servers, their equipment, what's needed, and have a full equipment plan and an upgrade plan in place for them. It's not like we're walking into this blind.
My only concern is just watching their history of how they have handled things the last couple of years and especially their interaction with their own employees, and I want to make sure that we're not going to be taken advantage of. I am all in favor of helping out a neighbor, but I don't want to be doing their work for them. I know a specific example where they had a very low-cost employee that was a key position, and they chose to let that employee go and are now begging and trying to get that employee to come back after that employee found better-paying work elsewhere, and it's just part and parcel of where that city's gone in the last couple of years, and I'm worried it's not, they're not through tumbling. So I think we have to keep a close watch on this, and I don't know if we're able to break out of this contract at any time or what the legalities are, but we also need a way to cut bait if we have to.
This is a one-year contract, and I would have to look at it again, but I do remember there is a severability in there. I don't remember if it's a 30- or 60-day notice. Our city attorney wouldn't let us write one without that.
I'm trying to pull that up. There is an early termination provision.
For a contract with the city. So what would be the agreement with the new personnel? Let's say the contract with the city got terminated. Is that person still on staff here?
No. Their purpose for being here is to man that contract.
So they go together?
It's an at-will employment.
Sixty days.
Yeah. I support this because Grand Terrace needs help, and we're good neighbors. So I consider Grand Terrace to be a suburb of Loma Linda, the future greater Loma Linda.
Do you like to incorporate your name? I don't like it.
Okay, item number seven.
Mr. Mayor, we're requesting that that item not go forward tonight.
Oh, that it be withold completely, okay.
Yes, it needs some additional work before it will be ready for action.
Okay. Then consent calendar is available for items two through 11 without item seven.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Hold on.
Nope.
Just with a caveat that I just want to monitor what we're doing with that Grand Terrace contract, and I'd like maybe a report back on the status and where we're at with it in a month or two because I just, I am worried that we get caught up in somebody else's problems, and I really don't want that. Not to not be a good neighbor, just...
Can we make it two months after they hire the new employee?
Yeah, two months after we're up and running. I'm good with that. I just want to kind of get a status update because if it's, oh my goodness, we opened the doors and...
September meeting?
Yeah.
The agreement does provide for termination upon 60 days' notice.
Okay. Okay, so with that done, those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. The consent calendar absent item seven has been approved. Our old business council bill O-2014-07, second reading, roll call vote, amending the official zoning map at 26001 Redlands Boulevard.
This is amending the official zoning map for 36.9 acres in Redlands Boulevard in special planning district from, sorry, from EVC Special Planning District to EVC Bestial Planning District Plan Development. This is for the VA outpatient healthcare services facility, and I think we looked at this last meeting. Staff recommends that we waive the full reading and read by title only.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move.
Okay. Go ahead.
It is entitled "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Amending the Official Zoning Map of the City of Loma Linda, From East Valley Corridor Specific Plan, Special District, EVC-SD, to East Valley Corridor Specific Plan, Special District, Plan Development, EVC, SD, and PD." You may vote. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now for our new business, we will call to order the housing authority to have a joint meeting for our budget. City manager or finance director, whoever would like to speak.
This time I give it to Diana to present the budget.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, we're here to present our annual budget. We did have a workshop, a joint workshop with the Budget Committee and the City Council to present the proposed budget. We have before you the general fund, the city as a whole, and the housing authority will be presented. Since our workshop, we, the city manager, did make some revisions to the proposed budget for none of them affect the general fund. There was one change to the capital funds, which is our traffic impact fund, which he proposed to do an update study for the Redlands Boulevard, California Street. I guess, is it a widening or...
Yes, it's to update. The plan was approved about almost 20 years ago for the intersection at Redlands and California.
So there's that. We have also in our special revenues for the Measure I funding that we get, there's a payment rehabilitation, slurry sale in two sections. It's Barton Road from the railroad bridge to Santa Montana Canyon, and then Mountain View from Barton to Lawton. And then we also have the enterprise fund for the connected communities. As part of the workshop, there were some priorities that were presented, which we evaluated, and the city manager felt these items were needed as urgency items to be added to the budget. So there's some backup power, secondary power feed to the data center and servers that need to be replaced. So these are items that have been added to the budget since the workshop, so the numbers are now reflected. We gave you new schedules for the cash sheets balances, so those are before you. And so we'll go ahead and present the rest of the budget. And here, again, we start with our beginning fund balance, and we've changed the titles a little bit. GASBIE, which is our Government Accounting Standards Board, has come up with new standards of classifying fund balance. So there's, we have unassigned, assigned, and committed fund balance. The unassigned is what we used to call is our available fund balance, which wasn't committed or specifically designated as a reserve, that we called them, so that. We started the current year with 5.2 million. Again, we, assigned is what we call our equipment replacement fund, so we still have the 1.2 million in that fund, and then committed was our rainy day reserve fund, so we still have the 3.5 million. So we have a total of fund balance in the general fund of 10 million. And as you can see, next year, we'll continue with that. We're adding a little bit to our fund balance with the proposed budget. Not a whole lot, but we are presenting before you a balanced budget, so we are presenting to end again with a million, 10 million in total fund balance to move forward with. General fund, basically, I'm going to just focus on the proposed budget because I know we did cover a lot of this in the workshop, but we're basically presenting available fund balance or unassigned fund balance, close to 5.3 million. We're doing 16 million in revenue, and again, 16 million in expenditures, and then we're going to end again with 5.3 million. The major differences we'll see in our revenue sources will be our sales tax with a significant increase of 28%, and this is attributed to the economic incentive contract we signed with Mansville Oil. They will be generating significant revenue, but we also will present before you an offset to that revenue as the economic incentive as an expenditure. We have overhead of 1.7 million, the motor vehicle license 1.6, our property tax 1.2, refuse is close to a million, franchise fees also close to a million. Building activity is a major increase with the activity in our building with the VA and other projects that are in the pipeline. We have the hotel and...
Gas station.
The gas station, and I believe the parking structure at the medical center as well.
I have a quick question. On the property tax, is that about a year delayed or a half?
That is actually more, has to do with RDA, the way the residual receipts from RDA are coming in. They fluctuate from those ROPS dispersments that we get every six months, so we may see a little bit more, but sometimes it depends on what gets requested on the ROPS and how much is actually left over for them to disperse those residual receipts.
Well, I guess the reason I was asking, I just wondered if it reflects the assessment value of our properties that the county does?
Actually, those I projected to just stay flat on the regular secured property tax. I just budget them conservatively as flat, so, but the reduction you see here is more of that residual receipt portion of the property tax.
Because if you ask real estate agents, you'll tell you that properties are going up by 20, 25%, but yet the county's not assessing them any higher than they're selling for.
Well, off 13 prevents them.
But I think that if it's sold for more, we are going to get the...
Yeah. If it's sold, then you get the increased assessment on a regular type.
The percentage of our housing inventory that is sold per year is very small.
Not enough to make a significant impact, okay.
Correct. So that's why I kind of kept it flat as far as property, until I actually see more... So that's why I kind of kept it flat as far as property, until I actually see more, more of. I got to see it to believe it, kind of. And so I budget conservatively on the revenue side. And these are our expenditures. See, our major increase you'll see again is in our general government. And this is where we budgeted for the economic incentive for Mansfield Oil. We have a slight increase in our police services. Community development also, you'll see a big increase due to the building activity. We do have a contract with Willden who does our building permitting activity and they get a percentage of the revenue they generate from building permits. So you'll see that. And I believe we do have a few environmental studies that we're trying to complete on those items as well. Fire, we have an increase, we have salary increases and equipment increase. We are to the point where we're starting to need replacement of capital assets, major equipment, vehicles. So you'll see some increases in those items throughout the budget. And then our public works, just a slight increases. We also have some equipment, some trucks we need to replace in that section as well. So we have 16 million in expenditures that we are proposing for the fiscal year budget. And it's a 14% increase as opposed to last year's budget. But overall, we are presenting a balanced budget and we do project to end the year with a increase of 13,600 to our fund balance. This is where we propose, we show, the city manager has evaluated with the Budget Committee. We have been looking at the way we have reserves or commitments in the new terms. So as part of the budget and it's one of the items that will be presented as a resolution that is requested for your approval, we are proposing to move $2 million from the unassigned fund balance to the committed fund balance. And that has to be done by resolution of the highest authority of the governing body. And it can only be spent at the same level. So if we, if there was a declared emergency, we would have to come to you with a resolution in order to tap into those funds as well. So that's one of the items presented there before you.
I think that's a wise thing to do. It's called squirreling away the money.
Okay, and this is, here you'll see the overall city. We are going to be tapping into some fund balance. And most of that fund balance, that expenditure will be from capital funds and special revenue funds. None of it, as we have already presented, the general fund, we're pretty much balanced and we're staying the same from last year. So, but most of the changes we'll see right now will be attributed to the capital funds and other special revenue funds. As you can see, general fund was already presented. Sewer fund, we have a slight increase in sewer fund in the revenues. We did have a rate increase and we are going to see that come through. Loma Linda Connected Communities, it's a slight decrease that's being reflected here in the revenues. But it is, it does have to do with our VA contract. We had some back billing this year that we're catching up on. So you'll see the revenue will be higher this year than it will be next year. But it's, it's pretty good. We're still better off than we were previously. And then water fund, it's a slight decrease. We did have a rate increase, but we are seeing some drops in consumption usage. It's both due to water conservation with the new meters. We are seeing people conserving water. And we are seeing that the weather hasn't been as hot as it had been in previous years. So water consumption is being a little bit more conservative. Capital projects, here's where you'll see, the major one will be the expenditure for the Stewart Street Bridge. We did get contributions from the Loma Linda University Medical Center for that project. Next year, we're, we'll probably be wrapping it up. So we just have a small, smaller contribution, I think it's about 800,000, that we'll be seeing and spending it in next year. And then the other funds, it's a slight decrease. And I believe that that had to do with grant funding. We aren't getting as much grant funding as we previously got. So there is a reduction in those funding sources. So overall, you'll see a reduction in the general city for revenues and expenditures as well. And again, in most of them, you'll see, you know, revenues, we try to, expenditures, we try to match with our revenue sources. LLC CP, you'll see a little bit higher expenditures here. As we pointed out, we are trying to replace equipment that needs to be replaced. It has reached its life and, well, needs to be replaced because we had an experience recently where our, I'm not sure what it's called, our firewall...
One of the swish went out. It cost a lot of...
And we were basically down for almost a day and so it took some time. And so we are realizing that equipment is at its end of life and needs to be replaced if we are to continue to be functional. So we are investing some funds in that area. Water, we continue to invest in meter replacements. We're hoping to wrap that up within the next couple of years and hopefully have the full city replaced on the radio read system and be able to make that whole process more efficient and less time consuming and less manpower intensive. Capital projects, again, that has mainly to do with the Stewart Street Bridge and some other street improvements. I believe it's our contributions to the I-10 Tippecanoe Interchange Project as well that come out of that fund that we've been contributing this year, but won't be as much next year. And then we have again, the other funds, which I believe are mainly due to grants and some special revenue funds. I think Measure I and other funds come out of there. That will, the expenditures will be less in the next year than they have been in this year. So overall, you'll see city-wise, a reduction in expenditures of 7% as well. So total fund balance, you'll see that we are spending a fund balance of $2 million. But that has to mainly do with the special, some enterprise funds and special revenue funds. So you'll see that those, it's less, it's, fund balance is going down. But that's kind of how it works with the special projects and the capital projects that we get. We collect fees from developers upfront and we kind of store them away for a couple of years to then in one year, we'll probably spend it on a major project. So that's where you'll see us eating away at the fund balance. But it's, it's how we have to do it in order to accomplish a significant project in one year. And then we have our Loma Linda Housing Authority. And basically, it's, right now, we're not doing a whole bunch. We don't, we don't have a, in a sense, a new revenue stream. We basically are collecting payments on homes that have been sold. And so we are collecting those payments, which keeps the housing authority just in an operational mode. We aren't doing any new projects or expanding the housing authority in any way. So it's just basically a status quo maintenance type of budget. And here we are again. We're always very conservative on our revenues and very conscientious of the expenditures. The city manager, as always, has directed us to review our expenses and try to keep them, you know, as low as we can. And our proposed budget, again, with the change to our fund balance and moving 2 million, we are proposing to end with the unassigned as 3.3 million, our assigned, which is our equipment replacement fund of 1.2 million, and our committed now at 5.5 million.
Okay, any questions?
How do you take into account the fact that this state wants about $3 million from us and we're in litigation with them? Do you anticipate that we might lose and lose 3 million? Or how do you think about that?
I mean, we could potentially, but the lawyers are, I guess they're more optimistic on it. And they do see where, we did at one point pay the state some funds, so they're kind of offsetting that. So they're saying that the net would be about more like a million and a half.
Okay.
So with that, so, but it, the state and even the courts have kind of flip-flopped on some of their decisions recently. Especially, there was recently a ruling on some of the city loans and one of the judge kind of turned his opinion around. And basically, so, I mean, we may eventually see money on the city loans, but it would be subject to this new formula. We were hopeful that we would see it upfront because we had re-adopted the agreements in a timeframe. But now the judge has kind of reversed his opinion on that. So it, you know, I just, I don't want to, I want to kind of let the law and the lawyers handle that as far as...
Do you anticipate that being resolved by the end of this fiscal year, this new fiscal year?
In this fiscal year?
Well, no, 2014, 15.
I'm not sure.
We have a 17, no, 18 city, is it 18 or 118? 118 city ahead of us, so...
Might be a few years.
Might be a few years, yes.
Okay.
And again, I would like to thank the department head for submitting the paperwork and numbers to me on a timely manners. And Diana and her team worked very hard to get this budget completed in addition to doing the audit and deal with the State Department of Finance and ROPS and so forth, so far.
Yes, and I'd like to add my congratulations to the Finance Department for getting this done so early and doing so well, despite all of those challenges with the state still getting it done. What are you going to do for the next month?
I actually told Jarb I might take a vacation this year. It's been a while.
So congratulations, job well done. So can we just do all of this?
No, the Budget Committee would like to present their recommendation.
Okay.
So Jay?
I noticed. I was kind of surprised to see that the recommendations weren't in your packet. And so, I don't know if this is the first time that you hear about them. Of what?
That your recommendations are in the...
Well, the recommendations are kind of adopted through it, but I didn't notice the recommendations themselves, the way we presented it, to be presented to the City Council.
Wow.
I think basically, we really like to point out that just as we're seeing grant terrace having issues, Loma Linda is not. And this is basically a lot of time decisions that were made years ago and why we're kind of in the position that we're in. The reason why we could take so much money out of the unassigned and putting it into committed is again, decisions made a long time ago. And now they're becoming fruitful in effect. Even though most cities are down and still struggling, Loma Linda with its little tax base that it ever had is doing very, very well, keeping itself above water. All based upon being able to produce a balanced and sustainable budget. And for many years, the Budget Committee has watched the balanced part come into play in which very early on, you guys committed to reduce expenditures to match revenues. That produced the balanced scenario for the last six, seven years. The Budget Committee is now looking at the sustainable portions of that, of the budget. And that has to do with, what we were concerned with this year was the delayed maintenance and acquisition of retiring of equipment and other items that are on there. A lot of the items are being addressed in changes that you've made since the presentation of us and we were doing our recommendations. But to go a little bit farther with that, is one of the items that we've always wanted to see was a tracking mechanism of all those items that are being up for replacement. And in the last couple of years, we had indicated, I'll say, a limit of, if anything costs over $40,000 to be put into the replacement fund. And in effect, what's happening is, since you don't know about it, you don't know that it's going, it has to be spent. As a management company or as a management head, for my business, I would like to see if there's stuff that's coming down the road that I'm going to have to replace. Should we at least note it and know that it's going to have to be replaced? How much we're going to spend? How much is, are we spending? And are we falling behind or are we keeping ahead of it? And that's all that does. And so again, we kind of would like to see that tracking mechanism be put into place. And the items that are being purchased now, since there was this big delay in purchasing stuff, you're going to have to go on a spending spree sometime or another to try and catch up on that. And if you were to put those items in the tracking system now, then the next time they come to be up for replacement, their life is gone. Either you would know about how much you're short or you've put money into the system to just go ahead and repurchase that. So as a Budget Committee, we're just always concerned, always understating the budget because you don't know what kind of liabilities that you're having, at least on the capital type fund, the spending. So that was our basic concerns with the recommendations was. We are appreciative of the money being transferred. We'd rather kind of see that going into the capital replacement fund if it's going to be spent out of there, unless there's enough cash to spend it normally. But anything that's kind of large purchases in fire trucks or everything else, let's try and get that into a position where it's going to be allocated over the lifespan of the item and be able to repurchase it when that life is done. So that was our basic concern, any other questions?
Well, I was just wondering, because like you said, we tend to have enough cash to cash flow capital purchases as they're coming up. So there's a little bit more of a downward pressure on budgetary expenditures if you preserve your equipment replacement fund and just cash flow your equipment replacement as it comes up. I agree with you, it's nice to have something anticipated, but it also provides a little bit more fiscal restraint to have to fit capital expenses within the budget.
From the citizen's side, I'd rather do that. Because it does restrict you. Not necessarily this particular council, but there have been prior councils in which were a little bit more liberal. You may not be here in 10 years, 15 years. And so as, on the citizen's side, that's the basic maintenance of the city. And that should be a kind of a standard pull-through that you would like to see go through the city rather than being at discretion. And I know it's harder for city managers to cash flow that. But still, you still don't know what your downside is if you're just doing it to cash flow. And we weren't always in a position, we have to take loans out for those items too, so...
Yeah, I think your concerns would be more of an issue if they were decrementing the capital, the equipment replacement fund to buy these new items.
Yes.
That would be more of an issue, yeah.
However, you still don't know what the liability is until you just got surprised with it today.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
I would like to thank you, Jay, and the Budget Committee for work with me throughout these years, and it's been very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to say, he has kept us in the loop better than any other of the city managers of surprises and not surprises, and for the most part, not having any surprises. Some of the other managers have, and some very big surprises at the very end, leading us down a path and coming up with something different, so, he is a little, small jewel in the city to keep if we could, so.
Yeah, that's noted. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Seconding of a lot of people's opinions. Thank you. Any?
Questions in order?
Always, as long as you keep it brief. Come on up to the podium.
So brief, I don't need you to walk up.
Well, the people, the people who are maybe not listening couldn't hear you if you weren't at the podium.
Oh, okay. This presumes I was paying enough attention. The, I thought a substantial increase in revenue this time was attributable to the Mansville Oil, and gentlemen's concern was about sustainability of the inflows and outflows. Is that a long-term expectation that those funds will continue to flow into the city, or is that just kind of a blip that will make things?
It's a 20-year agreement.
Who years?
However, who knows what the market's going to be like in eight, or 10, or 15, or 20 years. So, you know, Diana keeps us toeing the line as far as being very conservative, not getting a big influx of money and creating future obligations for ourselves and having them dry up. So, we treat this on a year-by-year basis.
Okay. And was the lawsuit by the state, is that public knowledge, or is that something not, oh, it is, okay.
Yeah. Well, there was also another lawsuit hang over our heads that was resolved in our favor, so. Our existential challenge passed with a favorable outcome. And with regard to the Mansfield deal, you cannot account for future externalities, so.
If we all go electric, it's going to go down fast, really fast.
Okay, so how shall we handle this item? Can we move everything in one line?
I think you could take all the related items, A through J, together.
Okay.
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve this year's city budget as it is stated in on our agenda, which includes a number of items, A through J. Will that suffice?
Yes.
Or, okay.
But not without a second.
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I was just going to make a note that we, it is really, really nice for us on the council to know that we go through this year after year without really having any major issues. Many, many cities are having lots of issues still, so, it is nice that our city is in a position in which we go through this almost on a routine basis, and it's not easy. Clearly, it requires a lot of assistance from a lot of folks, and I, it makes me proud to be able to use our city as an example. When I go to the airport and I see what we're doing over there, and trying to remind everybody that we need to be more like Loma Linda, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no? The budget is approved unanimously. Congratulations. Are there any reports of councilmen? Okay, then we'll do reports. I will make a brief report. This morning, I rode the SBX bus line to my jury duty, and the fact that I was late because the bus took a little while helped me, because my late departure placed me randomly in a group that was dismissed. So, I'm thankful to SBX for that. And I think the SBX route is having a little bit of a dip from their week of free service in utilization, but we'll see what, we'll see what becomes of it as time goes by. It's a comfortable ride. There was a gentleman on the bus who was approximately 60 years old by appearances, and was riding as a student to Cal State. And that's a credit to Cal State that someone at that age can be working on an English major. I think that's great, you know, pursue your bliss, as they say. I always like to take note of my fellow passengers. When I traveled on Greyhound, for instance, it seemed like all of my fellow passengers were recent people discharged from state prisons. So, I'm favorably impressed with the clientele on SBX. And that concludes my report of council. Are there any reports of officers? Yes, we have the city manager report regarding Stewart Street.
Now, I'm wearing my Public Works Director, City Engineer hat. As you can see, tonight, we asked you for additional funding for the project, for the soft costs that the city had to put in for this project, for geotechnical services, construction management services, construction survey, for staking, and so, I want to tell you why and how we are doing. This is, this is picture looking north at the proposed, the bridge. The bridge itself, the structure is completed. We are in the process of give this to, ready to give it to university, so that they can put in the irrigation system, fill in the dirt, and do landscaping and street lighting on the bridge itself. If you look to the side, the, you see that the bridge, and you see that short retaining wall, that's where the dirt is going to be and where that's landscape is going to be. There will be some sort of shade structure and some benches. The deck of the bridge will be granite with the name of the people that donate money, so there's still a lot of room left for people who want to donate money to help build this bridge, to donate money so they can put in the towel and have your name on the bridge. And you can see, we dipped the street down 15 feet deep. There's, I have a pointer. Down the bottom, the lower spot, there's a cash basin on both sides, and there's gravity flow to the channel at the north end of Campus Street. This is part of the retaining wall with the facial wall on it. This portion just had to say, as you can see the text there. This is then other side of the bridge, that part of retaining wall, and it will be a texture of globe, similar to what we have on our seal there, will be on the wall. Back up a little bit. This morning, they just completed, built a pour concrete on the panel next to this section right here. So, they did that, they did two panels this morning, they poured concrete for two panels this morning. One just to the east of this panel, and they set the form, get ready for the southeast corner. This is what the form looked like when it's laid on the ground. It's the texture of the globe, and then they lift it up and rotate them, and put it against that reinforcement bar right there, and they pour concrete. This is another section of the wall that was poured this morning, and they poured today, they probably removed the form by, today's Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday morning, they're going to remove the form. They installed the traffic signal at campus and Stewart Street, the traffic signal, that location's completed. They are in the process of widening the, add the right turn pocket right here at the east bow, I'm sorry, westbound Stewart Street at Anderson. They, they removed all the dirt, put in the base material. They're ready to pour concrete, curb and gutter by next week, and we base paved the street by next week to get ready for the graduation on the 24th. So, we want to make sure that we have all that done, including relocating the street light and the traffic signal at the corner. So, that will be. As far as scheduling go, as you can see, we continue after we pour the concrete wall today. They just got removed the form and moved to the next location, and set up the wall for our next location and pour again. The, and then they will do the water proving on the, on the candid little wall. So, before we set the rebar, we have to do water proving the rebar, and then set the form on the other side, and then pour concrete, to make sure that the water will not penetrate into, on either side of the wall. We will do the, we already saw cut the sidewalk on Stewart and Anderson. We will be doing the, again, like I mentioned earlier, curb and gutter on the right turn pocket on Stewart Street, and also the right turn pocket, south bow on Anderson to Stewart Street. That's also under construction, doing it right now. So, at the item number 19, we will do a final grade on the sidewalk also, and then we pour the sidewalk earlier, this week, and then we'll do a water proving on the bridge deck itself, which is, you know, you see the deck, that was looking like, that black tar. You will put that on the wall, so that if it rained, or when it's, they irrigate the landscaping, that will not leak into the street down below. So, so as soon as that, that water proving compound cure, then the university can come in and put dirt in the landscape portion and put in the street and so forth.
Are there drains in that landscaping portion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All of this, the, in addition to the cash basin that intercepts the storm drain, the rainwater, behind the wall, all the rainwater that will come in and flow against the wall will flow down, and there's a pipe underneath, on top of the footing, that drain the water out into the cash basin. So, that will be, that all along the retaining wall. Okay? So, the, as far as the budget goes, is on budget. As far as construction, unfortunately, the construction is the delay. We're supposed to have this completed by April the 15th, but now we're looking at the end of August. And I work closely with the university, Ken Brier, Brad Johnson, and the landscaping, I can't remember his name right now, it's escaping. Heard, he heard. So, the university staff will do a lot of work themselves too, so. Any question? Yes, sir. They probably drive golf cart on top, yes. This bridge not going anywhere, it's very thick and very strong.
It's seriously over-engineered. It could probably handle a fully loaded semi.
Can arrange patrol.
Thank you, that's in my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, city clerk has reported on this very solemn occasion. I think your mic is not working.
We have the two incumbents, we're the only two that filed, and so, the City Council did adopt a resolution that would appoint Mr. Daley and Mr. Duper to those two council seats. The election code allows us to seat at any time subsequent to the June 3 election. So, Mr. Daley will not be here on June 10, so we're going to suggest that we meet on June 24, which is a regularly scheduled meeting date, to do the installation and have a light agenda, and choose what committees you're going to be on and so forth. So, if we will have a quorum for the 24th, we could do it then, or we could do it, I think it's July 1. Let me look here. Or July 1. The June 24 would be a regular date, and that's the preferable date.
Okay. I think June sounds good. Okay, so, yeah, we'll go with June.
Thank you.
And it looks like I will probably be not in town for the July meeting, the second, you know, the fourth Tuesday of the month, so, will require Mayor Protem Popescu at that point to take over. Okay, so is that the end of your report? Okay, the City Council is adjourned, and we will finish off now our Housing Authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Small agenda. Okay, would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda, which is 99.9999% of topics? Okay, not hearing any. Does the consent calendar have any support?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no? It's the opinion of the chair, that the ayes have it. By unanimity, consent calendar is approved. The new business item has already been dispensed with. Are there any member reports? Are there any reports of officers? Okay, the Housing Authority is adjourned. Now to the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items? You can even talk about the ones on the agenda, and I don't care. Okay, the consent calendar, what do you think?
I'll move it. I have a question.
Okay, go ahead. Is, let's get a second first.
Second.
Okay, what's your question?
On the lawsuit against the state, how are we expanding the funds for the legal fees on that?
The legal fees for the lawsuit actually come out of the general fund.
Okay.
Because it is the city suit against the.
I see.
The DOF.
And since we've had to go through the process of filing for ROPS, just from memory, can you tell me how often does Department of Finance deny us certain ROPS, where then you subsequently have to explain to them why they need to be approved, and they eventually reverse themselves?
Every ROPS we filed, every ROPS we've had a meeting confer.
Really?
At this time, it was four items that we contested. Two of them are part of the lawsuit, the city loans.
Okay.
And then the Civic Center lease payment. And then there were two items on there. One was a new, legislature adopted AB 471, which is that we could basically, the Housing Authority could get administrative costs reimbursed or allocated to them. But they denied us on that because they're seeing it as a, you had to be a separate entity. It could not be the entity that had formed the RDA, it had to be, that took over the housing.
Okay.
That's their interpretation of the law, but there, we think that there will be challenges from bigger agencies on that ruling.
So, that wasn't, that particular item was not approved?
Correct.
So, did that not impact our budget, where we then had to take money out of?
We did not budget, I mean, we were requesting it on the ROPS to be dispersed to us.
I see, okay.
And we could have supplemented the Housing Authority with that, but we didn't budget for any of it until.
So, you've had almost a meeting confer with every quarterly ROP?
Correct.
And in those meeting confers, how often did you have to actually physically go to Sacramento and talk to someone?
We've only gone once.
So, the rest of the time, you're able to do it by phone?
By phone.
Okay. That's interesting. Over at the airport, they go to Sacramento almost every, every few?
Yeah, the conference call worked great. We have our attorney at his office, our, we sit in the conference room, and.
And who's representing us on our side for the attorneys? Is it Mark or someone else?
Mark will sometime, initially, when we first filed the litigation, we did have Ratan and Tucker in those calls as well.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second on the consent calendar, is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no. The ayes have it, it's unanimous, and we've approved the consent calendar, and we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Once again, we appreciate all attendees, especially those who are faithful and diligent.